Our joint meeting of the city councils, successor agency to the redevelopment agency, the public finance authority, public utility authority, and all those listed on our agenda this Tuesday, March 30th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, will you call? Roll call, please.
Sure. Councilmember Corona.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rab.
Here.
Councilmember Rogers.
Here.
Councilmember Magana.
Present.
Mayor Vargas.
Here. Thank you. For those of you who are joining us on Zoom, if you would like to make a public comment on the Zoom screen, please click on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen. A list of participants will appear on the right side of the screen. At the bottom of the list, please click on the gray Raise Hand button. This will signal to the host that you'd like to provide public comment, and you'll be added to the list. If you are using Zoom on your smartphone, tap on your screen. A new screen will pop up with the list of participants. Look for the Raise Hand button on the screen. And for those who are calling in using a phone line, you can just simply dial star nine on your keypad to signal that you'd like to make a comment. And if you hit star nine a second time, it will remove your request. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to item number three, which is our invocation, which will be led by Pastor Don Meinberg of the Reflections Christians Fellowship. At the conclusion of the invocation, if we could remain standing for item four, which is our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Corona.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that. I would ask you now, if you guys could all please close your eyes, bow your heads, let's go to God in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, first of all, we thank you so much for all your blessings. And we thank you, Lord, for all of us giving us the opportunity to be here today as we begin again going back into this building, Lord, in order to be able to do the city's business. Thank you, Lord, for that. And, Lord, thank you for bringing all these leaders here to this place in order for them to express their thoughts, their ideas, and their decisions in leading your people here in the city of Paris. But, Lord, I want to pray right now for Rita's grandson, Jalen, that passed away very recently from a horrible car accident. Lord, I pray for Rita. I pray for her family, that you will provide them all comfort and peace on each of them. Lord, we know that Jalen is with you today in heaven, but, Lord, this family needs you to carry them through this terrible storm. Lord, you are their strength in this time of sorrow. And, Lord, you show us so often in your word what a godly leader should look like. You modeled it perfectly when you were here on this earth. So, Lord, I ask you to please bless each of our city leaders here, every staff member here tonight. Let their voices and decisions be heard in a way that brings blessing to this wonderful city of Paris. And, Lord, I pray that this council meeting tonight is pleasing to you, and through it all, you will be glorified. Lord, we love you with everything we have and everything we are, and praise you in the powerful and precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for a beautiful invocation. Item five is a report on closed session items. Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session to discuss a number of items on the agenda. There was one case of potential litigation, two items of real property negotiations, and one for a public employee appointment. On all these, the council was updated, gave direction to staff, but no reportable action was taken tonight.
Thank you. Item six is Presentation and Announcements, 6A. Presentation by Western Riverside Council of Governments, also known as WRCOG, regarding the streetlight rebate to the city of Paris. This item will be introduced by our interim city manager, Claire Mira Montes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Fabian to do a presentation to the city as part of the streetlight rebate program. We'd like to present us with a rebate check, so we're happy to introduce Mr. Fabian from the Western Riverside Council of Governments.
This is Daniel Sotero from Western Riverside Council of Governments here to present. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. As mentioned, Daniel Sotero, Senior Analyst with WRCOG, to present on the streetlight program. And I do believe I do have a presentation here. I'm not sure if it can be pulled up on the city's side or if... Thank you for that. Perfect. Next slide, please. So I'll start with a little bit of background on the streetlight program. In 2014, WRCOG's member agencies approached us regarding their increasing costs related to streetlight utility and energy charges. And so in 2014, they initiated... They directed staff to initiate a regional effort to assist the member jurisdictions to purchase their streetlights and in an effort to lower their utility bills. Once purchased, the streetlights would be retrofitted to LED, and maintenance would be provided over a regional contract. The major objectives of the program include saving energy, assisting the member jurisdictions in lowering their utility bills, enhancing public safety, and by taking local control of the streetlights, the cities actually create smart city and revenue generating opportunities. Next slide, please. The streetlight program included 11 member agencies across the WRCOG subregion, including the city of Paris. Next slide, please. And the big picture of the program involves that over 50,000 streetlights were purchased and retrofitted to LED. The streetlight project... The streetlight retrofit project commenced in 2019 and was completed in fall 2020. The new LED lamps used across the subregion adhere to the following best practices and guidelines, including the American Medical Association's recommendations for LED lighting, in which the city of Paris chose to use 2,700 K color temperature. The LED streetlights provide true colors that may improve... Or true color perception that may improve neighborhood appearance as well as public safety. They also support Palomar Observatory night sky objectives by using full cutoff LED fixtures, thereby reducing light pollution. And all of these recommendations of best practices, we utilized public input and member agency input as well through a series of activities, including a demonstration area in the city of Hemet, where WRCOG hosted nighttime tours of various streetlight technologies to help gain feedback and help create these LED guidelines to utilize across the subregion. And overall, the program will help the member agencies save $70 million over 20 years. Next slide, please. So for the city of Paris, this includes the purchase of 4,454 streetlights from Southern California Edison. Shortly thereafter, in May 2020, the streetlight retrofit commenced, and it only took a few months to complete, you know, over 4,400 streetlights. So the program was moving fairly quickly. And overall, 4,412 streetlights were converted to LED. There are only a few remaining streetlights that remain for LED retrofit, which include decorative-style streetlights in the downtown area and all of those communities, although I am aware that the city is still planning for the LED retrofit of those. So we may have more good news on those as well. Next slide, please. So for the city of Paris, the LED streetlight retrofit is now saving the city over $680,000 annually, which is a 63% reduction in the utility cost. This is by the purchase as well as LED retrofits. There are two layers of savings for the city. And by lowering their energy consumption by utilizing LED technologies, over 1.9 million KWH will be saved annually. And for context, that's about enough energy to power 230 homes each year. The overall GHG gas emissions by utilizing less energy is also equivalent to about 293 passenger vehicles driven for one year. So quite a bit of GHG reductions, energy savings, as well as utility cost savings for the city. Next slide, please. This is a visualization here of the project savings for the city. Next slide, please. And so the... This is a few pictures here to demonstrate what the new LED lighting looks like in the neighborhoods. On the left, you can see the older-style sodium streetlights that were used previous to the retrofit. On the right side, you can see the new LED lighting in a residential neighborhood. As you can see, apart from the much better color perception than one gets under the streetlights, they also illuminate the roadway a little bit wider than the old streetlights used to. Next slide. This is a few pictures, before and after, of a arterial roadway. As you can see, lost less dark spots in the roadway and much better color perception. You can see the color of the tree in the background there. Next slide, please. And also to show how the new LED streetlights reduce light pollution, we consulted with a contractor to take a series of aerial photography at night of the areas that did the LED streetlight retrofit. As you can see on the top, if possible, I'm not sure if you can zoom in, but if one looks closely at the pictures, the top image will show that where the streetlights are located, you might see orbs or these really bright spots of light where the streetlights are. That's indicative of light pollution, where light is... In this case, it's shooting upward towards the sky. And in the bottom example, which is after the LED retrofit took place, you can no longer see those orbs. Rather, you see just light on the ground. So we're very happy with the results of this in reducing light pollution as well as improving roadway visibility. Next slide, please. This is another example, much clearer image. As you can see, as I mentioned, the bright spots that might be seen near streetlights or the orbs indicative of upward light pollution. And then the next slide, you'll see that that is no longer there. And so by utilizing these LED streetlight fixtures, utilizing eligible streetlight fixtures, the city of Paris is actually receiving a streetlight rebate of $525,757. So we're very happy to provide that to the city here. As you can see, I did have a picture of the giant check that we typically present in person, but in lieu of that, I did provide this picture here. So definitely a virtual round of applause here for the city. We could not have done it without the city leadership involved, city staff that have participated over the years to help implement this program. And we definitely appreciate the city's participation and very happy to present on that today here. Yeah, so, next slide here. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any comments or questions.
Thank you, Daniel. Counsel, anybody have any questions? Don't see anybody raising their hands. All right, well, we definitely appreciate that check. Feel free to bring them one every month, that'd be nice. But it does make an extreme difference. I remember when I finally got to my block, I was traveling home one evening, and a few blocks... Or during the daytime, I saw a truck doing a retrofit and didn't realize they got all the way to my block. And when I went out to take my trash, the whole street was illuminated compared to the prior lights. So it does make a significant difference, does help with the pollution, because we were getting a lot of calls and complaints before this transition about pollution from the lights. So we really do appreciate it and glad that we got involved in this program. So thank you again, and please thank everyone in back home and your staff.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the comments and will do.
Thanks. Okay, item seven is our Youth Advisory Committee Communications. Ms. Naomi Acosta, which is the president of our YAP committee.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and city staff, to celebrate the high school class of 2021, the YC is collaborating with the Community Services Department to provide engaging activities to our graduating seniors. Upcoming events include a high school senior drive-in movie and a graduation parade. Information on how to participate will be posted this week on city's social media outlets. This month, the societal subcommittee is taking a moment to reflect by bringing attention to the violent hate crimes that are being experienced throughout the country. We are encouraging peace, love, and respect for all. For more information on how to help, please go to our social media pages. Next month, the Public Health Subcommittee will be launching the Clean Air Initiative campaign that will be posted on a biweekly basis as a continued effort to educate our community of the harmful effects of smoking through the creation of social media graphics. Lastly, if you're curious about what we do, please join us at one of our YC meetings every first and third Tuesday of the month at 5:00 PM via Zoom. Link can be obtained by contacting the Community Service Department. Also, applications are still available on the city website and are due by July 31st at 5:00 PM. The Youth Advisory Committee would also like to acknowledge National Death History Month, where we celebrate from March 13th through April 15th to commemorate the achievements of people who are deaf and hard of hearing. The YC hopes that everyone continues to stay safe and healthy through these times. This concludes our updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Item eight is our approval of minutes. 8A, consideration to approve the minutes of the irregular joint meeting held on March 9th, 2021, held at the city council and all the other entities as listed on our agenda. There are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rab, second by Councilman Corona. Please call roll call vote.
Councilmember Corona. Mayor Pro Tem Rab.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Magana.
Yes.
Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Five oh, motion approved.
Thank you. Item nine is our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are normally enacted in one motion. The mayor or city council may remove a consent calendar item for a separate action. We will allow public comment, which will be limited to three minutes. Any councilperson have any requests to pull an item for a separate discussion? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak?
No, sir.
IT?
No, sir.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Councilwoman Magana, second by Mayor Pro Tem Rab. Please call a roll call vote.
Councilmember Corona.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rab.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Magana.
Yes.
Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Five oh, motion approved.
Item 10 is our public hearings. 10A is consideration to adopt next resolution number to acquire the fee simple interest in real property for development on Enchanted Hills Park. And this will be introduced by our city attorney, Mr. Eric Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I believe and hope that Nick Papa John in our office is on the Zoom call.
Yes, I am. Good evening, Honorable Bear and members of the city council. Tonight, for your consideration, is the adoption of a resolution of necessity for... To acquire the fee simple interest in real property for development of Enchanted Hills Park. This area is located west of Mets... On the south side of West Mets Road, east of Carter Drive, and west of Altura Drive. The APN numbers are listed in the staff report and in the resolution. Currently, this property is privately owned. However, the city does desire to develop it and convert it into a community park. However, before that can happen, the city needs to acquire title or at least possession of the property. The city sent out a offer letter in early February. We haven't heard back from any of the owners of record. There's been a little communication, but so far, there has been no counteroffer or no real negotiation has yet occurred for acquisition of the property. So staff is recommending that the city council authorize the acquisition of the property through eminent domain. However, before that can happen, the city council needs to make a few findings before they can adopt a resolution of necessity, which would authorize going forward with eminent domain. And the first two findings are up on... It's like they're up on the screen for you right now. And the first one is whether public interest, convenience, and necessity require the project. And according to the open space and the land use element, the area is in need of parkland. And having a park here would help meet those needs that are mentioned in the open space and land use element. Second, the project is... You have to consider whether the project is planned in the manner which will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. And so often, you would consider if there's a better location somewhere else, or you have to weigh, you know, the pros and cons of the project in that certain location. And in here, this property is already essentially an unofficial park. It's mostly undeveloped, but there are some trails that are being used for BMX and for hiking. And so it's already being used by the community unofficially as a park. And this project would essentially make it an official park, and it would have... There would be a ton of features that would make it very appealing to the community. It would provide a great place to be outdoors. And so, I mean, this place is already ready for a park, so it makes sense to have it in this location. And so, okay, so the third finding would be whether the acquisition of the property is necessary for the project. And the acquisition is necessary because without this property, this park can't be developed. And the fourth finding is whether a government code offer letter had been sent out, and it was sent out in accordance with the government code and related state law on February 8th, 2021. And we have not received any kind of counteroffer nor an acceptance of the city's offer. So those are the four findings. And if the city finds these... Makes these findings tonight, then we can move forward with the eminent domain process. However, I do want to mention that this just authorizes us to move forward with eminent domain. However, we're still more than happy to try to negotiate a deal and to work with the property owners outside of the litigation process. So that's something that will always remain open, and we're more than welcome to... We're more than happy to consider future negotiations and counteroffers.
Thank you, Nick. Counsel, before I open up public hearing, anybody have any questions or comments? All righty. This time, we're going to open up public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak?
No, sir.
IT?
No, sir.
Very good. I will close the public hearing, and I will now call for a motion on the resolution. Have a motion by Councilman Corona, second by Mayor Pro Tem Rab. Please call a roll call vote.
Councilmember Corona.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rab.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Magana.
Yes.
Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Five oh, motion approved.
Item 10B is consideration to adopt resolution number next in order, and the first reading of ordinance number next in order for the proposed community facilities district number 2021-1 for... And CFD 2021-1, it's Force 2021-1, excuse me, the Avion Pointe d'Acacia of the city of Paris. And this will be introduced by our Director of Finance, Mr. Ernie Reyno.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So for tonight, for this item 10B, I will be having Jim Fabian of the group Philman Rollup. He'll be making the presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now, and I'm going to give the control over to him. He's going to make this presentation. Okay. All right, Jim, it's all yours.
Great, thank you, Ernie. Appreciate it. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we have in front of you an item related to CFD 21... Excuse me, 2021-1, a brief history. This CFD originally was formed back in 2006, called 2006-3 Alder. It was formed to finance facilities and fees for the local school districts, the city, and EMWD. Twenty-two units were built back then, and the remaining property remained undeveloped, approximately 23 acres. In 2018, the city entered into a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the current property owner at that time to memorialize terms under which the current CFD would levy against the 22 homes, and then the remaining special taxes would be handled. At that time, nothing happened with the property until D.R. Horton acquired title to the property, and D.R. Horton plans to form a new CFD to develop the remaining property. Next slide, please. On January 12th, the city council approved a new Memorandum of Understanding with D.R. Horton. It terminated that prior MOU that was approved back in 2018. It put in motion the mechanism to create a new CFD 2021-1. It provides for the financing of the facilities for the city and EMWD, and it allows the city to use the existing special taxes to pay for the formation of the new CFD. And the MOU required that D.R. Horton provide a letter of credit to secure payment of the debt service on the new bonds that will be issued. The D.R. Horton provided a petition to the city. That petition set in motion certain things that are listed here, requiring the levy of the special tax issuance of the bonds, and then the establishment of appropriation limit. It also waived the election requirements that allow us to conduct the election tonight after the public hearing. And that's the most important thing that you'll see later on in the presentation when we go through the public hearing process. The CFD, there are no registered voters within the boundaries of the CFD, and D.R. Horton is the only landowner at the present time in the proposed CFD. Back on February 9th, we brought forward to you two resolutions called the Resolutions of Intention to levy the special taxes, and then also to declare the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in the amount of $5 million for CFD 2021-1. And then it set the time and place of the public hearing for tonight, March 30th. CFD 2021-1, I'm struggling with that for some reason, is actually two contiguous, non-contiguous areas, includes 106 residential lots. As I mentioned before, public facilities and fees for the city and EMWD will benefit the remaining property. The CFD is broken into the Avion Pointe Track, which is located at Windflower The CFD is broken into the Avion Point Track, which is located at Windflower Lane and West Bowen Road. There's 54 residential units there. And then the Acacia Track that's shown here, that has 52 residential units. This is a list of the special tax rates that each residential unit within the CFD will pay. You can see that we have six different types of residential property. And the homes that have the largest square feet, number of square footage, pay the highest special tax. And you can see the special tax ranges from 2446 per unit to $1,930 per residential unit, and that's an annual special tax payment, which increases by 2% per year. Some of the details on the formation, since this CFD was in place, it was done with a 2% escalator. This is an exception to your existing CFD policies, but its grandfather, due to the previous CFD 2006-3 that it replaces. The new CFD will be for 40 fiscal years, commencing with fiscal year 21-22. And tonight, we are conducting a public hearing, adopting resolutions and an ordinance. And that will be to establish the CFD and to authorize the special taxes and incur bonded So right now, we have two resolutions in front of you. The first one is to establish the CFD and authorize the levy of the special tax. It also sets the, and establishes the appropriation limit for the CFD. The second resolution determines the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in the amount of $5 million, as I mentioned previously. And it calls for a special election within the district. After the public hearing is over, assuming we have an affirmative vote of the property owner, we will have a resolution to declare the results of the special election. We will have a resolution approving the joint community facilities agreement and funding agreement with EMWD. We'll have a resolution that will record the notice of cessation of the special taxes for the previous CFD 2006-3 Alder. The notice of cessation will be recorded against the property, and the lien will be extinguished on those properties. We will have the introduction and waiving of the first reading of the ordinance levying the special taxes within the new CFD 2021-1. Next steps, assuming the public hearing goes according to plan, we would have the second reading of the ordinance coming back to the city council on April the 13th. Then 30 days later, the ordinance would go into effect on May 14th, 2021. On July 2nd, 2021, the cessation of the special tax lien would be recorded at the county, and the 2006-3 lien would be dissolved, and the CFD would be dissolved on the properties. So that is an overview. We do have a public hearing that we now have to do, and I believe the mayor has a script.
All right, seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this matter?
No, sir.
IT?
No, sir.
Thank you. I will call, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion for the first I have a motion by Mayor Protem Rab, second by Councilwoman Magana. Call a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Corona?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rab?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Magana?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Five oh, motion approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you open up the ballot, please?
Community Facilities District Number 2021-1, Avion Point Acacia of the City of Paris, special bonds, special taxes, and appropriations limit elections. The ballot is marked yes.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion on the remaining resolutions and the first reading of the ordinance. I have a motion by Councilwoman Magana, and a second by Mayor Protem Rab. Please call roll call vote.
Councilmember Corona?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rab?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Magana?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Five oh, motion approved.
Thank you. Okay, 10 says consideration to adopt resolution next, and next number in order, approving the draft Community Development Block Grant Action Plan for fiscal year 2021 through And this will be introduced by interim city manager Clara Miramontes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ms. Sarah Cortez de Pabon. She's our grants manager for the City of Paris. She will be introducing this item tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and city staff. Let me go ahead and share my screen with you. Don't know if you can see my screen.
Yes.
So as you know, the City of Paris is an entitlement grantee for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the CDBG program is designed to assist in the development of viable communities by supporting projects that provide decent housing, sustainable living environments, and expand economic opportunities. Eligible uses for CDBG is housing, neighborhood services, community services, community parks and facilities, infrastructure, businesses and jobs, and the administration of the grant. The distribution is as follows for the any CDBG resources. HUD announced its allocations for the upcoming fiscal year on February 25th, 2021, and it allows for 15% of our allocation to go towards public services. 20% can be used for planning and administration, and the remainder goes towards non-public service projects. This year, the upcoming fiscal year, the City of Paris was awarded $954,641. As part of the annual action plan process, citizen participation is required. And the staff did hold three community meetings on December 16th of last year, January 6th of this year, and January 14th of this year at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Additionally, we did hold one stakeholder meeting on December 16th of last year at 10:00 AM. The CDBG subcommittee did meet on the 9th of February of this year to review applications. The city received 11 applications, and the CDBG subcommittee did review them and looked for the need and justification, project effectiveness, cost effectiveness and budget, and experience and past performance. Six of the seven public service applications were returning. We did have one new nonprofit which did apply, which was Women Achieving Success for the Youth Life Skills Education Program. The requested action on this item is that city council open the public hearing and take all public comments on this item, and note that the final adoption of the annual action plan is scheduled for April 27th of 2021. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Counsel, anybody have any questions? Very good. Seeing none, I'm going to open up public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, sir.
IT?
No, sir.
Very good. I will close public comment, or public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion by Councilman Corona, second by Mayor Protem Rab. Please call roll call vote.
Councilmember Corona?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rab?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Magana?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Five oh, motion approved.
Thank you. Item D is consideration to adopt resolution number next in order, approving a substantial amendment to the 2019-2024 Consolidated Plan and the 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan to include funding in the amount of $90,000 from the CARES Act Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus, CDBG CV Utility Assistance Program to the CDBG CV Planning and Administration Activity. And this will be introduced by our interim city manager, Clara Miramontes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ms. Cortez de Pabon again to also present this item.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and share my screen once again. Again, the item before you is a substantial amendment to the CDBG program for the amending the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan, as well as the five-year consolidated plan. On March 27th, 2020, the CARES Act was signed, and with that brought CARES Act relief for CDBG funds. The city did receive round one and three funds. Round one funds were received on April 2nd, 2020, in the amount of $536,986. And round three funds were received on September 11th, and in the amount of $442,432 in round three funds. These funds were used to prepare, used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. From round one funds, $136,986 was allocated to the Utility Assistance Program. Our current balance of this program is $116,000. And for Rental and Mortgage Assistance Program, we did have round one and three funds allocated to this program in the total amount of $642,432. And the current balance for this program is $304,557 with 33 cents. We did not allocate any money for administration and planning. The proposed activity is that we reallocate $90,000 to administration and planning activities from the Utility Assistance Program. These funds will be used for two temporary part-time positions to assist with application technical assistance, intake, and follow-up. Currently, the Utility Assistance Program has assisted 131 households to date since we initiated the program in April of last year. Its balance after the reallocation of the $90,000 will be $26,267. This remaining balance will assist approximately 28 new eligible households with up to three months of assistance, not to exceed $300 a month for utility assistance with water, electric, and gas. An update on our Rental and Mortgage Assistance Program. To date, 202 households have been assisted since the program initiated last year in April. The remaining balance of $304,000 can assist 42 new eligible households with up to six months of assistance, not to exceed $1,200 per month. Because administration and planning was not included in the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan, it does trigger a substantial amendment, because it is a new activity and it was not funded and included in the final adopted annual action plan. An amendment would allow the reopening, the reprogramming of the $90,000 from the Utility Assistance Program to the administration and planning activity for COVID-19 assistance to be added to the fiscal year 2021 Annual Action Plan and the five-year consolidated plan. A 20-day public hearing and comment period was conducted and began on, on April 10th, I'm sorry, March 10th, 2020 through March 30th. The requested action is that city council open the public hearing and take all public comments on this item, and that we adopt the substantial amendment to the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan and five-year consolidated plan to include the CDBG coronavirus allocations with the proposed reprogramming recommendations, and direct staff to take all necessary actions to implement the amendment in accordance with HUD requirements. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sarah, for another good presentation. Counsel, anybody have any questions before I open up the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll open up public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, sir. Yes, sir, we have one person.
Okay.
Lupe Gomez, you can go ahead now.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Gomez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Apologies, I'm in the car.
No problem.
I just want to understand, great presentation, thank you so much for, it was very clear. But I want to understand one more thing. So am I, are we still able to, the public hearing is still going to be open from April, beginning April 10th? Is that my understanding for us to be able to make a comment on this reallocation of funds? That is my question.
Yeah, we will be closing this tonight.
Oh, I see.
We won't be extending it.
Has, may I ask something else?
You can try, go ahead.
Okay. So has, since the research has been done on these funds, and I have, this is my first time hearing about it, I do apologize, has there been an evaluation of the need in the community where these funds are no longer needed? Because we're still in the middle of the pandemic.
Okay, there, so first of all, just for clarification, this is just a public comment, it's really not a Q and A. But just so, just for your, for clarification, there is a process for this, and there's a committee that we meet, so there, there are, you know, steps that we take when we allocate these funds and what we do with them, so. But if you need more clarification, we'll be more than happy to have staff contact you.
Very well.
Okay, is there anything else, Ms. Gomez?
No, that will be all. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, no, not a problem. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Very good. We'll close public comments, public hearing, excuse me. At this time, I'll call for a resolution, or, excuse me, call for a motion. I have a motion by Councilman Corona, and a second by Councilwoman Magana. Please call roll call vote.
Councilmember Corona?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rab?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Magana?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Five oh, motion approved.
Thank you. Item 11 are business items. 11A is the Western Community Energy, also known as the WCE, update. This will be introduced by our interim city manager, Ms. Clara Miramontes.
Thank you, Mayor. The, please upload the presentation. There we go. Thank you. Good evening. This item is a receivable file to provide an update regarding the Western, the Western Community Energy Program. Approximately two years ago, the city became a participant of the Western Community Energy Program, which was designed to create a community choice aggregation program that would allow local government to which was designed to create a community choice aggregation program that would allow local government to to have the ability to buy electricity directly from the source, and therefore be able to provide competitive rates to its customers, being the residents in the city. The program finally launched in April of 2020, and as you know, the pandemic began in March of 2020. So due to the pandemic, the WCE has been experiencing higher-than-anticipated delinquency rates, which currently we're looking at 6.25% delinquency rates, which totals to about $5 million in lost revenues that were not accounted or expected. In addition to that, the energy costs in 2020 did exceed the projected energy prices, pricing, which added an additional million, $10 million in any energy costs that were also not anticipated by the WCE. Since then, in February of this year, SCE also increased, increased what they call their PCIA, which is the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment, and did increase the delivery charges affecting the customers of the WCE. The WCE, which is the West, the, the program, WCE conducted a cost of services analysis in order to see what a recommendation would be that would provide an appropriate rate adjustment and a temporary surcharge to be able to recover from these loss of revenues that were not planned in order to continue with the WCE program. The board, the WCE board did meet earlier this month and did provide demonstrated options as far as rate adjustments, and did conclude that a rate adjustment would become effective in March of 15, which is, took place last week, and a temporary surcharge would become effective in May of 2021. What this means, rates would be approximately, temporarily anywhere from $12 to $14 per customer, and the CARES program customers would have a rate decrease, a 50% reduction from those, from those rate increases. This concludes my presentation. I'd also like to introduce Mr. Casey Daly with the WCE. He is the Director of Energy Environmental Programs. Also, we have the Director of WRCOG, Mr. Christopher Gray, as well as Tyler Masters, the Director of the WCE, for any questions and anything the council would like to also inquire about. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Counsel, anybody have any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Is there any indication as to how long the rate increase will last? If it's indicated it was temporary, is there a timeframe, or is it the WC will monitor it and make adjustments if necessary?
Mr. Casey Daly, I'd like to-
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Casey Daly, Western Riverside Community, Council of Governments, excuse me. So to answer the question specifically, sir, there, there are two aspects of the of the adjustment that the city manager was discussing. One is a power cost adjustment that is being designed as a temporary, as temporary, to account for the approximate $10 million in excess energy costs that WCE incurred this past summer. As you all might recall, the months of July, August, and September were some of the hottest months on record, and so we incurred significant increases in energy costs as a result of that. So the power cost adjustment is designed to be temporary. However, the rate adjustments have been made such that they are consistent with the cost of providing the services. And so across the board, energy costs are growing, going up, and therefore WCE needs to ensure that it is able to recoup the cost that is putting out there for the services that are being provided. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, thank you. And then one other question. Has there been any talk of maybe having a different, or increasing rates among commercial or industrial users to offset the increase among residential users or customers?
Yeah, thank you for that question. That's a great question. So one of the things that WCE is working on right now, and that we will be coming back to the board in the fall with, is an overarching cost of service analysis to ensure that the rate structure that is being provided for customers is consistent with the cost of providing those services. So we're going to be looking at kind of a an overarching restructuring of rate structures for all customer classes, whether that's commercial, residential, industrial, what have you. So, so that will be something that, that the WCE staff and team are currently working on, and we expect this, this fall to come back to the WCE board with an update across the board.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilman Corona?
Yes, so, so I saw that, uh, SoCal Edison, they, they put a 20% increase in what's called a Power Charge Indifference Adjustment. Can you explain that?
Yes, sir. I will, I will take my best attempt to explain that, but in, in a short version, the, the PCIA is a charge that is applied to customers that participate in a community choice aggregation program like WCE. And so the PCIA that Southern California Edison recently enacted was approximately a 20% increase in their PCIA. And so that increase disproportionately impacts CCA customers, like City of Paris customers, WCE customers. So the, the PCIA is, is something that not only WCE, but CCAs across the state of California are actively working with both the California Public Utilities Commission and the State of California and the legislature to address as it is something that, that the, the CCA community across the board have identified as something that disproportionately negatively impacts WCE and other CCA customers.
Okay, so, so if they were just a SoCal Edison customer, would they see that increase?
So the PCIA does not apply to, to Edison customers. The PCIA is, for lack of a better term, it's, it's the exit fee. So it's, it's a, it's a charge that Edison customers have to bear simply for the fact that they are now a customer of a community choice aggregation program like WCE. So as I mentioned, it disproportionately and negatively impacts those customers.
Okay. Okay, and then, when, when did the governor enact the moratorium on, on shutting utilities?
Sure, sure, yeah, that's a, that's, 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 you know, critical to this whole conversation here. So it was, it was last year. It was, I'll defer to Tyler Masters for, for specific, but it was about this time last year. It was around March, April of last year when the governor enacted all of those executive orders. And so-
The beauty of Zoom meetings.
Hi, hi, everyone. This is Chris Gray from WRCOG. If, if I could continue. The, while Mr. Daly deals with his dog issue. The, the governor enacted the moratorium about now. We have a number of customers who have not paid their bill when, since the moratorium, so we are tracking receivables. We have a number of receivables which are approaching 12 months, close to 12 months. So we have a number of, I can't give you, I think in, in terms of round numbers, we have about $1 million in bills that are, I believe, about nine to 12, about nine months past due. So, so with the governor enacting his moratorium about this time last year, people stopped paying their bills, they became due in April or May, and then they became past due at that point. So we are looking at a number of folks, a number of accounts where the, they are almost, I would say, nine months, and, and I think pretty soon they'll be about a year in arrears. I would say as well, we have been told that the governor is likely to extend the moratorium. Again, it's possible it could be to the end of the calendar year, but I, I would say just in general, any utility that's providing any service, whether it's public or private, the water districts, just, just as an aside, statewide water districts have about $1 billion in arrears. The waste management, people aren't even paying their waste management bill. So this, this decision by the governor is hugely, is incredibly impactful on us.
Right. Okay, so, so I guess my next question, and, and, and you know, I don't mean to feel like I'm attacking anybody, but, but, but the first question I have is, why, why is this the first time we're hearing about it a year later, right? Because I would imagine that it didn't just get to $5 million. It, it kind of accumulated to that much, right, as more and more people started getting there? Which is my first, first thing. And then, and then the second thing is, is after about the first month, how could we didn't make changes back then to maybe mitigate what we're seeing now?
Casey, do you want to, I, I could certainly opine on that one if, so, so what I would say is, the, the problem we have is from a legal perspective, we're not raising our bills because of the arrears issue. We're raising the bills because of energy costs. I don't believe that we, we can legally go and say, hey, we're going to raise our bills on everyone who's actually paying their bills for everyone whose bills cannot pay their bills. So the, the primary, you know, one of the primary reasons why the bill, why the rates are being raised is our energy costs have increased significantly, and part of that issue is there is a billing delay. So for example, as you all remember, we had some very significant heat storms in the July, August, September period. We didn't actually get those bills in many cases until November, December. So there is a, a roughly a two-to-three-month period where the customer uses the energy, it goes to Edison, it comes back to us. So in, in that case, we started talking about rate adjustments in January, and for, because there are certain processes and steps we have to follow, as you all know as city council members, this was only brought forward, we were only able to act, take action on our board really at March. So it wasn't a matter of us not knowing this was a problem. It was a matter of, it took us a while for all this data to come in, and then for us to understand the full scope of it, and as soon as it did, we started to take action. But there was a, there is an inherent delay of the process. Casey, did you want to add anything to that?
Other than my most sincere and deep apologies for Taco, I'm very sorry about that. I am on doggy dad duty right now.
No worries, no worries.
But I think Chris did a great job of kind of outlining this. You know, the, 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 the time issue, you know, certainly understand that. And, and, you know, as, as Chris mentioned, we've been working towards this to, as we started to identify these challenges over the last couple of months. And so we brought it forward to the WCE board last month.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And you know, on, on a side note too, Casey, I got a five-year-old and, and I'm a teacher, so I deal with all kinds of stuff, and a dog too, so, so that's okay. So my next question, I, I think, okay, because, because when, when we brought up the WCE, and a lot of our residents, they were getting it, and, and I would, I would put myself out there, I would explain, no, it's okay, don't worry. Your bills are going to be lower, which it was, right? That's how it was promoted to us. It was, it was a good sell. We were like, hey, hey, they're going to be like the middleman, but they're going to actually bring the cost down. And now we're not seeing that. And so why does it make sense to have WCE? And why does it make sense for a resident to stay with WCE? Because I know, I know at one time they had to opt out, and, and several residents, they, they went out, right? They, they were like, no, I'll just stick it with the same way I had it. And then now there's a fee to opt out. So why, so I guess the first two questions is, is, um, my first question is, is why, why, why do we, why are we going to continue with WCE if it doesn't seem like it's the cheaper thing? And the second thing is, why would a resident want to, want to even stay with WCE?
Yeah, thank you for that. Both super fair questions. So, so I, I would say that the, the, to, to respond to the first, maybe the second question first. So, so there is a process. There is a process if any customer of WCE would like to go back to Southern California Edison, there's a process for that. It's, and I, I'm very happy to walk through what that process looks like. There are some restrictions that exist that are State of California Public Utility Restrictions that are not imposed by WCE or Southern California Edison. But there are some restrictions slash penalties associated if a customer chooses tomorrow that they want to go back to Southern California Edison. I'm happy to talk through that. The, the, the long-term benefit of participating with WCE is the choice in community choice aggregation. And so what WCE can provide is a, a, an organization that is closer to the community that is more closely aligned with the needs of the community, and provide, frankly, provides these kinds of opportunities. We, we, we know that right now, there is, with the rate adjustment, things are, are moving around. But we also know that Southern California Edison will continue to adjust their rates on, on forever going forward. And I'm not going to get into, you know, all of the particulars here in open session, but what I will say is that there is, you know, significant long-term benefit for customers that want to participate with WCE. They'd be very happy to go through the process of what it looks like to exit WCE as a customer. But, you know, what we, what we offer is, is an alternative to Southern California Edison and a, a, a competitive rate structure that supports local choice in your power supply.
Yeah, Casey, I just wanted to add, there's a very direct answer to that. Our rates are lower than Edison's. Our rates have been lower than Edison's, they've always been lower than Edison's. The reason why your bill is higher than Edison is because of the PCIA charges. We had anticipated that that would, there would be a charge for the first year, it would go down over time. It's actually going up. So that's why we are supporting legislation at the statewide level to ask, to require that the CCAs be, sorry, the, the investor in utilities at SoCal Edison be more transparent on how they calculate the PCIA. If you think about it, they're charging us for essentially long-term energy contracts and costs they're incurring because of the CCA. If there's fewer customers, one would expect the cost to go down. We're not allowed to, Casey, Tyler, I don't believe that we actually get the, the process by which the PCIA is not, is set is not transparent, and so that's why we are supporting a bill to make it a transparent process. So the bottom line is, over time, the PCIA should go down, and then that will result in significant savings for the customer because our rates are lower, and our rates will always be lower than Edison's. So that has been a challenge for us, and we did not anticipate a 20% increase in the PCIA, and that's causing us significant challenges for our residents, and so that's why we're actively fighting that. But I hear you, and as Casey said, any customer who wants to leave WCE, we will, we will walk them through. We have customer service staff that will help them. And if any of you who are WCE customers do want to go back to Edison, there is a process, and we would be happy to share that with you on how that can work.
Okay. The, the, thanks, uh, yeah, yeah, I think you guys answered all the, all the questions. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Magana?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have, just have one question. The temporary surcharge is set to fall off after 12 months. So my question is, over the next 12-month period, are we going to see the same $12 to $13 per month increase? Or is that going to vary over the next 12 months?
Thank you for that question. So the, the, the number provided, that $12 to $13 is inclusive of everything. So that, the, the $12 to $13 a month bill impact is going to include both the WCE rate adjustment along with the PCA, Power Charge Adjustment.
So then after 12 months, that Power Charge Adjustment will drop off your bill. And I, and I did want to reiterate with something that Casey said. It is our understanding that there may be multiple rate increases coming out of Edison this year. We know that there's another one coming. Casey, is it April or May?
There, there, we, we anticipate at least one, if not two, before the end of the calendar year.
So follow-up question on that. So the temporary surcharge is looking more permanent then? Is that what that?
No, we, what we were saying is the, 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 the difference between, so what, what will happen is, we had to raise our rates because of energy costs. And by the way, energy costs are going up nationally, and they're also going up across the state. We've had to raise our rates. All the utilities across California are raising their rates too. Edison is going to be raising their rates because they're facing the same charges. So what we're saying is, we've identified an increase, and, which is about the increase that an average bill, average person will see on their bill. Those persons who've stayed with Edison, their bills are going to go up too. So that delta or that difference between WC and Edison is going to shrink as Edison's rates go up.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
But, but you did say after 12 months, that bill falls off.
Correct. That, that charge, that, that charge does, is going to fall off, yes.
Okay, and the, and the deficit is ten-
Nine of the temporary charge.
Right. The deficit is around 10 million, you guys said?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Of that 10 million, how much of that is on, uh, delinquent payments?
So there is, um, there is approximately five to six million, um, dollars right now um, that are identified as, um, delinquent or bad debts.
Okay. So, um, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Corona. I mean, I feel the same way, we're, we were all supporting this, and what happened was the pandemic. I mean, that's, it's inevitable. It's not, it's not, it's not our fault. We, we misled, we didn't mislead our people. We thought we were doing the right thing. I personally switched over myself, and unfortunately, we have this pandemic, and more than half of this deficit is due to delinquencies. So it's, it's unfortunate, we're all going to have to pay the, the share of this, um, disaster, if you will. Okay.
Uh, uh, Mayor Barris, we just add one item too.
Sure.
Um, we, we were very much, um, uh, we, we've been talking to your interim city manager and also, uh, council member Rogers. And we, we would just encourage that the more, the more to which you can, uh, use some of this, these, this relief funding coming to you for utility assistance, that is one way to indirectly help out W C E. Uh, so I, I did want to encourage you, as, as you have done, to, to find ways to help your residents out, because that is a way to, you know, help them pay their bills. Because as I said, we have a number of, of folks in W C, including a, a number of persons living in Paris who have some, who are substantially in arrears on their electric bill.
And, and just to throw it out there, so our community understands too, that, I don't, I didn't see the number, but there's like nine or 10 cities in the C C A?
Six.
Six.
Six cities. I know the six cities, this $10 to $14 increase supplies there all the cities equally.
Yes, sir.
So we're all, we're all taking this burden equally on the six cities, and it's not just Paris.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I could also just, um, just one, one additional point, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that, um, as, as part of the rate adjustment, so we're talking about $12 to $13, $12 to $14 a month. Um, for customers that are already enrolled in CARE, which is a program designed and set up for, for low and very low-income customers, um, the, the rate adjustment, uh, from W C E will result in about a $6 to $7 a month increase for those customers. So the, the W C E board, um, was, was very mindful, um, and I think cognizant of the fact that, uh, a number of W C E customers, uh, fall into that category. And so, um, the board made the decision, uh, and, you know, hats off to, to council member Rogers, um, for her leadership on this, is that, um, the CAREs customers, so those that are identified as, as low and very low income, um, will only be seeing about a $6 to $7 a month increase in their bill.
Right. All right, very good. I don't think there's any more questions, hands up. Madam Clerk, did we have any requests this week on this item?
No, sir.
I T?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you guys for the presentation. Appreciate you coming out, and, uh, I will reiterate as well about the dogs I got for Chihuahua, when I'm zooming at home, it's a challenge, so not a problem. Don't feel embarrassed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good evening, guys. Thank you again. Item 11B is the Police Department's annual update. This will be introduced by our Assistant Chief of Police Lieutenant Mike Portillo. You got the floor, sir. I think you are going to be back there. It's not a sound studio, so you're not going to be singing or anything.
I'll make do. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff, and members or residents of Paris. Uh, my name is Mike Portillo, and I'm assigned to the, uh, Paris station. And I'm going to go over the, uh, basically a, uh, a year-end recap of what the contract, um, entailed. Uh, you forgive me, I, I can't see the, uh, it's the, uh, the color from this angle. Uh, so.
Can we move it? Oh, God.
Since he was our only speaker tonight, can he do it from the front podium?
I'm improvising. We're, we're good, we're good.
Yeah, just come on up.
Come on up to the front podium.
It's fine.
I think the microphone's live up here.
Yeah. Come on down.
This was just, uh, coronavirus, uh, you know, guidelines here, but no, no one else came tonight, so you're the only one.
Yes.
All right, so, so my, uh, presentation is going to go over the sheriff's contract, uh, with current staffing levels, calls for service, population and response times. There you go. Community services and problem-oriented policing, and then moving forward. Next slide, please. Okay, so the sheriff's contract and, uh, staffing levels. I'm going to go over what that covers. So our current staffing levels, uh, we provide 24/7 coverage, and that equates to, uh, or what the city has, uh, uh, I guess purchased, is 100.70, well, 170.4 patrol hours per day. Last year, and we're just talking the calendar year from January 1st to December 31st of, uh, 2020, we had 52,000, or over 52,000 calls reported for service. Um, and what the contract gives, so there's roughly, we'll, we'll say, give or take 81,000 residents here in Paris. Now that's going off of 2019 stats, uh, the 2021 census that hasn't, uh, been published yet. Uh, so these are, these are estimates. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so with the contract services, uh, each hour is, uh, that, that's, that's billed. It breaks down to a piece of a deputy and a piece of all the support services or staff that go along with that. So what that comes out to is 35 sworn deputies, and that's patrol only. So those are the deputies that, that patrol the streets, uh, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, along with that, we have two dedicated sergeants. That's a, uh, uh, what we have now is a, a traffic sergeant, that's Sergeant Hibler. And then also, we have Sergeant Baccoul, he is the, he is the pop sergeant. Uh, that's problem-oriented policing, and he also covers the, uh, the special enforcement team. We have three dedicated accident investigator cars, uh, one of which is the commercial enforcement vehicle. Uh, we have four dedicated motor deputies, uh, we have six-
Just, just for clarification for the public, the three dedicated accident investigators, they're, those are sworn deputies?
Those are sworn deputies, correct. Yeah, these, in fact, these are all deputies, the numbers that are up on the screen right now, those are all, uh, sworn personnel.
Okay.
Uh, six set sergeants, so, or I'm sorry, six set deputies. Set stands for special enforcement team. Uh, those would be four zone deputies and two gang deputies. Uh, we also have four problem-oriented policing deputies. Those are, um, those deputies handle qual- quality of life issues. And then we also have a dedicated crime prevention deputy. And y'all might, might know me standing in the back of the room right now. So along with the, uh, along with the contract, now remember, these are rate-supported positions. Uh, that comes with two lieutenants, 10 sergeants, two of which are, are paid directly from Paris. Uh, eight detectives, so that gives us a total sworn staff of 71. Um, and that's, that's from rank, um, of captain all the way, all the way down. Now we have, uh, 10 community service officers. Uh, those, those officers, they are not sworn, they don't carry a gun, but they, they handle pass calls. They, uh, they take accident reports. Uh, Nina's also one of those. I think we all know Nina's. Uh, and, uh, let's see, what else do we have? Uh, sheriff service officers. Now obviously, we don't have, we can't cut a, a person in half, but that's essentially what the contract pays for. So when you go all the way through, we have a, uh, total staff, um, of, I believe it's 106-point and change. So if you can go next slide, please. There you go. 106.5 is what it equates to. So that's a total of 71 sworn deputies, uh, 35 and a half non-sworn, and then that gives us our, our total. So do I need to explain that a little bit more? Does, does everybody understand what the, uh, what those breakdowns come, come to? So when you, when you pay for our services, uh, it comes with everything. Uh, now, we could, there's, there's other, there's other, um, um, services we can provide, but essentially this provides everything. So you can't just have one deputy and then not have the backup staff, uh, to go along with it, accounting, office staff, and every, everything. It, it, it takes the, um, it takes all these people to staff a station. So your station is essentially about 107 people. Next slide, please. Oh, and the, I'm sorry, can you go back? There we go. So what that costs, the 2021 costs just under $21 million. Next slide, please. Uh, what, what's not covered in that, what I wanted to touch on, is the, um, uh, everything you don't see. So we have SWAT. The SWAT team is, is stationed, uh, they're assigned right down, well, within, within the city of Paris. Uh, so anytime we need SWAT, they are Johnny on the spot. They're, they're, they're here, and there's a lot of them. Same thing with the canines. The way we used to run our canines is we had a, uh, dedicated canine here in the city of Paris. Well, that canine deputy and, you know, the, uh, the, the dog was only here during the times that they worked. So they worked a, uh, let's say a swing shift, um, and it's, it's all, it's, it's always a prediction, okay? What's, when's the most, uh, likely time we're going to actually need the services of, of that dog? And that's, those are the days that the, uh, the deputy worked. Well, now that it went centralized, we have all the dogs, they're, they're housed under the umbrella of SWAT. So they're still, they're over here local as well. So when we need a dog, we have several of them, and, um, and they're always on. Uh, so that's one of the, the good things that, that has changed. Uh, as far as calls for service, you can see the difference in, uh, the different years. I can't read it from here, but I think we had, I think I had, had mentioned about 53,000 calls for service last, uh, last year for the, uh, the calendar year. Uh, and the population, there we go, I had mentioned that, that the, uh, those numbers were based off of, uh, 2019, and it's a, it's a projection. So, uh, it is a, it is an estimate based off the 1.5% growth. Uh, again, the final numbers haven't, the final numbers haven't come in yet, but that gives you an idea. As far as our response times, you can see, you can see over the years, uh, starting back from 2014 and go all the way to 2020. Well, let's look at 2019 and then 2020. Our response times for priority one calls, that's lights and sirens, that's something that's, uh, uh, we need, uh, a deputy there now. It went down from, uh, eight minutes to, to six minutes, and we're trying to break that five-minute, that five-minute mark. So, uh, priority two calls are, uh, you know, they're, uh, they're, the, when you look at the, when you look at the range of, of priority calls, priority one is the most severe. That's the, that's the call where somebody's, uh, life is in danger, we need somebody there like right now. And then priority four calls are, are pass calls. Let's say somebody comes home and finds that their car was broken into or their house was broken into. There's no threat. It's, it's definitely, uh, worthy of, of somebody responding, but there's no imminent threat there. Uh, next slide, please. And then, uh, we're going to go over community services and crime prevention. That's, uh, what Deputy Robleser is doing, and same thing with, uh, uh, C S O Nina Zulernando. Uh, what they're doing is they go out and they do the, uh, uh, the neighborhood watch-type programs. They'll, uh, they'll go out there, if, uh, let's say, a, um, a resident or a business is, is having a particular issue, uh, they go out there and, and collaborate, and, you know, put their heads together and formulate a plan to, to help them. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, they also, like I had mentioned, they, they collaborate, they collaborate with SWAG, apartment complexes, business partners, code enforcement. Uh, they do the Operation Safe Park. And then, uh, what else, I also wanted to touch on, and this is part of crime prevention, is the A L P Rs. Now, that we hope is a deterrent, and it's, it's been, it's been great. Those, those cameras went running, I believe it was July of, uh, 2020. They were, they were a little steep in price, uh, but they have, they have already helped us save, uh, hundreds of man-hours in solving crimes. So, uh, we've actually solved a, a murder as well, uh, using those cameras. Uh, and then we have the Polaris. We, that was a recent purchase, uh, and that's going to be, uh, once everything's all done and finalized, uh, we're going to go ahead and, and, um, the city will pay for it, but will be reimbursed with asset forfeiture funds, so.
And the Polaris is?
Uh, Polaris is, so, uh, again, a quality of life issue, we all have the, uh, we have all heard of the off-roaders, uh, kicking up dust and sound and, you know, things, things of that nature. That Polaris is going to help us, uh, uh, combat that. So, uh, we do have it, it's been outfitted, the stickers are goo- good, it's, uh, it has lights and sirens. We have the trailer along with that. Uh, we're just finalizing our training for-
The Polaris is, is an ATV vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
I just want to be clear to our listeners out there.
Mayor, if I may comment on the A L P R, just if you could go into the acronym. I know we got into the jargon, but not-
Oh, sure. Automated License Plate Readers is what that is. So, uh, we, we put that at all the, uh, entry points into the city. So as a car comes in, it's, it's reading those license plates. Um, some of those cars are, are reported stolen, and we'll get alerted that, okay, a stolen car just entered your city. Um, also, if there's a, let's say there's a, um, a, a wanted hit on that particular car, let's say it was involved in a carjacking or a murder or something like that, that's also going to flash, and we're going to know this, uh, this particular car is in the city, and it looks, basically, there's a, a, a picture of the car. Um, uh, hopefully, we can get a, a, a clear picture of the person driving, and we can really flood the area and, and look for that person, so.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I could ask another question, but while we're here, um, you mentioned the Polaris. I was wondering if there is any way we could partner and do some kind of community outreach orientations? I know there's a lot of off-roading, and oftentimes they don't seem to know, you know, what's legal versus what's illegal, and I'm wondering if we could kind of do some kind of partnership?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, before we, before we start, uh, citations, what we do is, is we go out there and do the, uh, educational, you know, warnings. And, uh, we also hand out flyers of where you can go. Uh, but absolutely, we can, we can definitely do more of that. That's, that's not a problem. And please, as I'm giving this presentation, if something comes up, uh, while it's still fresh, please reach out. I mean, I'll, I'll, there's, there's a slide there that asks for, for questions, but if you, if something pops up, and it, like you said, we're, we're still going through it, please, um, you know, interject, and, and I can answer those while, while we're still hot on the topic.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So right here's, uh, just pictures of some of the outreach. Uh, we have, uh, code enforcement and SWAG out here. Um, you know, we've all, uh, heard of the, and seen the, uh, the issues that, you know, the, the homeless, um, create. What I do want you to know is when we, when we go out there and do a cleanup, uh, it is a collaborative effort. Uh, but oftentimes Deputy Robles will go out there and make the initial contact. He will pull a file number, because there's a lot of things, we can't just go out there and arrest these people. Um, homelessness in and of itself is not a crime, uh, but what we, what we want to do is, is attack the root issue. So Deputy Robles will go out there and, uh, contact the people and see if they're willing to take services. And if they're willing to accept services, then we, we bring in the resources, whether it be SWAG or, uh, Department of Social Services, or, or whatever that might be. But they're also warned that they're, let's say they're trespass, trespassing or something like that. Uh, they know that we're going to be coming back and, uh, you know, doing the enforcement part of that. Uh, so, and it really is a collaborative effort with, uh, SWAG and code enforcement. Um, we, it really takes all those prongs in order to, to attack the, uh, the situation adequately. It is, exactly. Absolutely. Uh, again, uh, this is our community service, uh, slide. And, uh, the top right, you see Deputy Robles, and this was our, uh, you know, COVID had a, a really big impact, uh, uh, across, you know, across the nation, across the world. Uh, this is somewhat how it, how it affected us. We didn't have our, our typical shop with a cop. Um, we, we just, we just couldn't do it. So, but we, it's, it's an important program. And here you see Deputy Robles with, uh, with one of the, uh, recipients of the shop with a cop. And then, uh, we also have the Student of the Week program. Uh, Chick-fil-A was so gracious to provide us with gift cards. And, uh, they wanted to give them to the deputies, but we didn't feel, we felt those- to give them to the deputies, but we didn't feel, we felt those, those gift cards could better be used, uh, for the, the residents out there, the people that are, that are going through a hard time. Uh, well, one of those, one of those is, uh, I don't wanna say that the students are going through a hard time, but, uh, you know, figured, why not, why not, uh, it was Deputy Robles' idea, let's, let's do a Student of the Week, and, uh, do it that way. So, uh, you, you see one of the students out there, she was a recipient of, of a, uh, lunch from, from Chick-fil-A. And then, uh, there you have, uh, CSO Nina, she's out there providing a, a gift card to another student. And then, uh, you have one of the, the homeless gals, um, accepting some, some, some services from us. Next slide, please. Uh, again, we, uh, we also have volunteers. So, we weren't as active, again, because of COVID, uh, but we do have, we do have, uh, uh, explorers, and we do have our volunteers. As this starts to lift, as the, uh, the, the COVID restrictions start to, start to lift, we'll be a lot more active. Uh, we did use, we did have a, uh, a situation last week where we brought out our, our, uh, volunteers, and, uh, they, they really, they really help out a lot. Uh, next slide, please.
Uh, I do have a question on that.
Sure.
Uh, for, the, the first question, well, two questions. The first question, how do you become a volunteer? And the second question is, I put my application about a year ago, haven't heard anything back.
And that, that's, that's because of COVID, so-
You, you, you must have something in your background.
I know.
So what happens, it, it used to, we used to handle that all in-house, and, and now it is, is centralized. So when you turn an application, it goes to our Ben Clark Training Facility. And it's all, it's all centralized, and what they do is they start doing the, the background process. Uh, so it, there is, there is a background that you have to pass, uh, but because of COVID, all of that got put on hold. So, we, we usually had monthly meetings with the, uh, the volunteers. That all stopped, that all stopped. So any, anything we could do to minimize, you know, contact with the public, uh, that's, that's what we did, and, and that was, that was one of them. So, uh, I do remember you putting your application in. Uh, I'm, I'm sure it hasn't been lost, it's just been put on pause. So-
Well, we appreciate your willingness.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. So what, what happens, there's a, you know, we, we, you can go to the sheriff's website, and, uh, uh, there's, there's a volunteer link if, if you're interested. And we are always, well, I can't say we're always, prior to COVID, we were soliciting, we, we want volunteers, we, we want that help. Uh, but again, once, uh, once COVID hit, the, the impact of that was, you know, uh, putting, uh, pushing pause on our volunteers. And it was just recently that the current volunteers were able to come out again. So, as, uh, you know, hopefully, as, as people start to get vaccinated, and, and we build this herd immunity and, and what have you, uh, you'll, you'll start to see, uh, restrictions lifted. Uh, now, our problem-oriented policing, I had mentioned that before, uh, what they do is they, they tack all the, um, um, uh, quality-of-life issues. So, uh, and a lot of these community issues and quality-of-life issues kinda blend, so you're, you're gonna see Deputy Robles, he's gonna be in other pictures like, just like this. Um, but with, uh, with POP, it's a, it's a four-person team, and then you also have the sergeant. Uh, what they're gonna be doing is they're gonna specifically be going and, uh, utilizing the Polaris, and hitting a lot of these, um, uh, homeless encampments that can't be, that they're not easily accessible from, uh, or with regular cars. So, you'll, you'll see them out there. That's a picture of, uh, of our POP team, uh, and just different, um, situations they've been involved with. Next slide, please. Uh, again, you have some before and after pictures of, of the, uh, homeless cleanups. So, uh, and again, you see, uh, there's actually code enforcement in there, and, uh, it does take, it does take these, all these entities to, to help out. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, and then we have our traffic team. Again, I had mentioned that before, we got four, four motors. Now, in the previous slide, I said three accident investigators. Well, it's actually two, and then the one commercial enforcement. So, right here, I have him, uh, separated. You have a traffic CSO, so he is dedicated to, um, taking traffic, um, traffic accidents reports. And you really can't tell the difference, they're in a, they're in a black and white, so it looks like more people on the street. Uh, and then you have a dedicated sergeant. So, uh, we haven't had the chance to, to introduce him yet, uh, but he's also motor-trained, so you see, a lot of times, he's out there on the, um, out there on the streets enforcing traffic, uh, through education. So one of the ways that we, we try and, uh, reduce our traffic accidents is through education. A lot of people complain, they think that, uh, the purpose of, uh, of, of citations is to, uh, generate money for the city. That's not the case. There's so, so much more money goes into investigating the traffic, uh, collisions. Uh, so that's, that's the main purpose. Next slide, please. And I think that's, uh, you know, uh, let's, let's go to the next slide, please. Uh, I am sorry, I am sorry for that. Uh, I am, Councilwoman Rogers, I'm sorry. Uh, and then, again, we have some other pictures of, uh, of our motors, uh, out there with the public. And, uh, believe it or not, these, uh, these horses got loose, and, uh, the motors helped round them up. Next slide, please. Uh, some of the events in, uh, twenty twenty that we, uh, that we participated in. Uh, the checkmarks are the ones that we were able to participate in. The other ones were either canceled, or, or we couldn't, uh, we couldn't make it. Uh, and I don't have pictures of all of them, uh, but we, uh, we did try to go out there and, uh, uh, again, we're, be one with the community. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, again, a few of the pictures, and, uh, uh, there you see Deputy Robles in a few of those pictures, and a couple of pictures are Student of the Week. Uh, next slide, please. And, uh, again, these are, these are some of the ones. So the top right is gonna be the, uh, the point and time count. Uh, we did get to, to go to the, uh, the Peace and Unity March. Uh, the two on bottom ones on both sides, those are, uh, that was part of the, uh, drive-by graduation. And then, uh, the one on the bottom in the middle, uh, that was a donation of, of face masks for the, uh, for the deputies out there. Next slide, please. And as far as moving forward, next slide. Uh, these are some of the things that we have planned. Uh, the off, off-highway vehicle operations, uh, again, outreach operations, and you can, um, you know, that, that's, that's gonna go with, uh, you know, students, and, um, uh, homelessness, uh, you name it, city parks, going out there, um, assisting code enforcement and SWAG, uh, and then traffic operations. So the traffic safety operations, uh, a lot of those are grant-funded, so that's no cost to the city. Uh, but we have DUI checkpoints, uh, click it or tick it, DUI saturation patrols, and things of that nature. Next slide, please. And then, uh, here we are. That's the, uh, concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
It's a great crowd you have behind you.
Yeah.
Remember, that was, that was about a year ago.
Thank you very much, LT, for your presentation. Councilman, do you have any questions, comments?
Yeah, yes, I do, I do have some, uh, some questions. You know, I, I do remember that day. It was in February, and we had a packed crowd.
Packed.
And, uh, you know, I, after the, uh, after, I believe, the murder of about six people throughout our city, and, and, and no, since, since then, we hired more police.
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't had any big issues like that, uh, since, uh, you know, a couple, a couple incidents here and there. But the main concern that I'm getting a lot, and I'm seeing a lot, is, uh, stolen vehicles or stolen property. And, uh, you know, uh, I wonder if you could talk about how the, how, uh, how effective is the light plate readers in that? And then also, what can we do? Because I just saw a post, actually, the sheriff's, uh, posted, I don't think it happened in the city of Paris, but somebody stole a, a, a classic nineteen, uh, nineteen sixty-nine Mu- Ford Mustang, and they recovered it, they arrested the guy, but then they also put it in there, but the person was released. So how do we stop this?
Vote.
Because it's really frustrating.
Vote, exactly. And that's, that's just, that's the decriminalization of, of certain things. Uh, you know, I, there, there's an argument that, that, um, incarceration is a deterrent. You know, some people are gonna argue, yes, it's a deterrent, others are gonna say, no, it's not. Uh, if you don't have that, then there's no incentive not to. So, uh, that, that, our hands are tied when it comes to, when it comes to those, those types of, uh, crimes. You know, we will do what we can as far as, as far as making the arrest, absolutely, but now you have zero bail, you have all these, these other issues that are, are probably put in place for, uh, other reasons, but now here's the effect of that. You know, it's, it's an unintentional or unintended effect. So, uh, there, there's really not a lot of incentive for people to not to steal the car, if they're not, if they're not worried about having that on their, on their, uh, you know, their rap sheet and, and things of that nature. So, uh, we will continue to do our part and, and make those arrests and, and make the recoveries, uh, but it's, it's not even really a jail issue. It's, again, it's, it's more of a state issue. Um, you know, we arrest these, these people, and again, with the whole zero bail, it's not a, it's considered a nonviolent felony, so they're, they're released.
Yeah, whi- which, which I totally agree. It's, it's not, it's not a victimless crime, though.
Absolutely not.
Because if somebody loses their, their only car, then they have trouble getting to work.
And, and you have a subject matter expert right here, Councilman, or Mayor Protem Rab.
I had a quick question, um, and thank you for the presentation. Is the, we, we have a legislative analyst, and we've reached out to people in Sacramento, and I know, um, the sheriff has been more vocal in terms of some of the laws going out. Are there going to be more reaching out to various state legislators, state assemblymen, uh, regarding some of the proposed laws?
I, I have seen, I have seen the, uh, sheriff, uh, write letters as far as, uh, urging, urging different, different things, different, uh, proposals. I know he's not writing it himself, but he's urging a, a vote yes or a vote no.
And just wanna, I'm not sure if you've heard of SB eighty, I believe, eighty-two?
SB eighty-two. Uh, which one is that?
Just wanna make you aware of that, and you can probably pass it on to Sheriff Bianco. That's the, uh, bill from State Senator Nancy Skinner. Currently, a robbery is done with, you know, taking property by force or fear. The force could be pushing somebody, the fear. She wants to reclassify it so that a robbery can only be completed if it's, the force causes great bodily injury, not just injury.
Yes.
Or you use a weapon. So if somebody pushes an elderly person down, the elderly person scrapes their knee, bruises their arm, that would be a petty theft. And under, I think it's AB nineteen fifty, misdemeanors are no, are only one-year summary probation, not three-year summary probation. And I think, um, it's something we should all be aware of. I think it's something that the public should be aware of, something people should be angry about, and I think, um-
Absolutely.
Just wanna make you aware of that, if you could pass it on to Sheriff Bianco.
No, thank you, absolutely, thank you.
And I know he has a, a wide reach in terms of television, and I think it's something people of all political persuasions should come together and oppose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir, for a great presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Adam Twelve is our public comments. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak?
No, sir.
IT?
No, sir.
Thank you. Adam Twelve is our council communication. Councilman Corona, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do want us to start out by saying our, our thoughts and prayers are with the family of, uh, of Councilwoman Rogers, as, uh, her family's going through the difficult situation. Um, I, I, uh, am, am, uh, very glad to, to finally be here in the, uh, in, in the council chambers, uh, with, with all, with all my colleagues here. It's very good to see everybody here. Um, you know, I, I do wanna thank, uh, staff for, uh, for making sure everything was safe, and, and we have people by the doors, and everything spaced, uh, apart. We're all, almost all of us are pretty much vaccinated, and the, uh, you know, the CDC, but, but we're still, uh, wearing our masks to, to, to encourage to stay safe, which brings me on, onto the next point. As things are starting to open up, and if you look around Paris, things are starting to open up, and it's, it's a very good feeling about that. Our basketball rims are now back on the, on, uh, where, where they belong. Uh, people are playing in the playgrounds, uh, everything's going good. But it's still important to please follow, uh, safe guidelines. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh, what we're seeing in the East Coast, in New York, New Jersey, and some other places, they're actually starting to see another increase in, in, uh, rates, and, uh, you know, so maybe a possible fourth surge. So it's important that we still follow guidelines, uh, keep safe, uh, distance away from each other, wear your mask, wash your hands, all that, all that good stuff. Um, because people, still today, um, people are still getting sick, people are still dying. It's happening a lot less frequently, but it's still happening. And, and if you want things to go back to normal, just, just please continue to be cautious and get that vaccine if you can. Um, as we are starting to see safer numbers here in the city of Paris, uh, I wanna direct staff to, to look into possible ways that we could, uh, possibly have some events that are gonna be safer. I know we're gonna be doing the, uh, the graduation, and, and our staff does a great job making sure that's safe. But possibly even, um, uh, uh, may, maybe the city hikes before it gets too, too warm out there. Uh, I know it's, it's all outdoors, it's, it's, uh, I think you can space out the, the, the participants in a safe manner. Um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Magano?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd also too like to express my deepest condolences to Councilwoman Rita Rogers, um, and to all of Jalen's loved ones, and I admire your strength and all to, to still come into work today and serve our community, regardless of what you're going to. And also, I wanted to go ahead and, uh, acknowledge that I participated in the city-led COVID memorial to reflect on the lives lost due to COVID. Um, a great thank you to our city team for putting this together on a short notice. Um, this is also an opportunity to serve as a reminder for us to each reflect and do our part, such as getting vaccinated, so that we continue to do better and start opening up, wearing the mask, and taking care of all these protocols is one way that we will get there. And we're starting to feel a little bit like we're getting back to our routine, especially here, being up on the dais. It's been a long time since I've been here, but I'm fully vaccinated. Um, my second dose was definitely a little bit hard, but nothing that I would advise others, like to still go ahead and do your part, get vaccinated if you can. Um, and we will hopefully soon resume to, you know, what we were before this pandemic. Um, and then, on a personal note, I would like to share that I have, uh, married my best friend, Edward Nava, and I know, since he's so supportive, he's watching from home. Um, so moving forward- Oh, thank you. So moving forward, I will be changing my last name, and trust me, I won't get offended if you still refer to me as Councilwoman Magana. It's a name that I will obviously hold dearly, but moving forward, I will take on his last name. Um, so Edward, I know you're watching from home. Thank you for entrusting me and taking me on this journey with you, and that concludes my council comments for tonight. Thank you so much. Wishing you all a happy and safe spring break and Easter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rogers? I don't think your microphone's on. Is it? Maybe try the one next to you?
Tess?
There you go.
Okay. It's good to be back in the council chambers this evening. The Zoom meetings were a little challenging, not being here and not seeing the reactions of, uh, people in the audience or my colleagues, so it's very good to be here. I wanna congratulate you on your marriage. It's a wonderful journey to be on, so. And I wanna thank my colleagues and people in the community that have reached out to me with texts and phone calls and flowers, and just wishing me good thoughts, uh, on the loss of my precious grandson, Jalen Rogers. So I know where he is, and I know that he's in the Lord's hand, so that does give me some sort of peace. And I just, uh, this coming weekend, it's Friday is Good Friday, Sunday is Resurrection Sunday, and I hope we all have a chance to praise the Lord on Easter Sunday. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vargas. I'd like to start off by extending my condolences to Councilwoman Rogers on the loss of her grandson, Jalen. I could tell, based on just seeing him at various events, seeing your photos on Facebook, that you really loved him, along with all your other grandchildren and great-grandchildren. So I extend my prayers to you, uh, his family, his extended family, his friends, and everyone who's had an opportunity to interact with him, that they find solace during this trying and difficult time. And it's been a difficult time, um, everywhere, here in Paris, and just in general, in the whole area. So praying for everyone's family who's been impacted this year, um, from loss regarding COVID-nineteen, losses from everything else that's been affecting everyone, and just praying for them. Um, on a happier note, I'd like to extend congratulations to Councilwoman Nava, and I know I'm going to mess this up, but I wanted to say Councilwoman Nava, be one of the first people to say, congratulations to Councilwoman Nava on our, on our marriage. May you guys find happiness, and, um, many, 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 many years- May you guys find happiness and many, 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 many years of blessings. I just want to acknowledge tomorrow is Cesar Chavez Day. It would have been his ninety-fourth birthday, had he not passed away. He passed away in nineteen ninety-three. Our library across the street was one of the first public buildings named in his honor, and that was completed in nineteen ninety-four. So a year, little over a year, about fifteen months after his passing, we had one of the first buildings named after a great civil and union rights leader. So take time, if you can, to reflect on his legacy, what he's done, not only for farm workers, but for people in general, workers in general, ensuring that people are paid what they deserve and working hard, that they're treated with dignity and respect. And I think his legacy remains today. You have people who helped him along the path, his wife Helen Chavez, who passed away in nineteen, two thousand sixteen, Dolores Werthe, who's in her nineties and probably attends more political functions in California than any other person living. I see her all the time on people's Facebook feeds of pre-COVID. So just honor their memory and honor the memory of all that they've done for everyone. I want to wish everyone a safe and happy Easter weekend. It's been a trying time. It's been a dark winter. We're starting to see signs of spring. Things are reopening, gyms are reopening. We're in the red tier, hopefully moving into the orange tier by the middle of next month. But continue to socially distance, wear your mask, get your vaccine shot. I will be receiving my, my second shot April second, so fingers crossed it isn't too difficult. If not, I'll be laid out Saturday, the day after. And so I just want to wish everyone a happy Easter weekend, a happy April, and just continue to stay in prayer, whatever your religion is. A lot of our children are being attacked by social media and other media influences. I just seen things on Instagram and things on social media, there's a concentrated effort for the minds and hearts and souls of our children. So please keep them in your prayers as we move on. And that concludes my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I, I received both vaccinations. I had no symptoms whatsoever, so I appreciate if you'd all stop saying that because I already got my wife to get the first one and I got to get through the second one with her, so no problems, first or second. So if the four of you are happy to be back, how do you think I feel for the last several months being by myself on the dais? Welcome back, everybody. It's been me and the city clerk and our assistant clerk, all by ourselves here, and our deputy in the back. So it's nice to have everybody back on. I too extend my condolences to you, Councilwoman Rogers and your family. Just a couple of reiterations. First of all, I want to thank Public Works. There's a big notice going around as you see our walls, the graffiti is looking a lot much better, the painting, the removal of it. So I thank Brian Hill and your staff for, for tremendous job on that. It is definitely making a big difference in our city. Again, folks, I keep saying it and I'll say it again, street racing, we got issues with street racing, donuts, call nine five one seven seven six one zero nine nine, option five. We don't have the data, it's hard for our police to focus on certain areas and timeframes, so may not get a response immediately, I get that, but if they have the data, they know where to start focusing on. Paris and Menifee Valley Chamber of Commerce, student of the month, I attended that again this month. It was great to see all those kids who are recipients of those awards. I'd like to wish my two mothers from another mother, Catherine Fields and Athurin Broussard, for their very happy eightieth birthday this year. I did attend the COVID drive-through along with Councilwoman Nava and Councilwoman Rogers. It was a really nice event. I want to thank staff for putting that on. And to reiterate a little bit on, on Mayor Protem, you know, city Paris has so much history here and our first mural is going to be a great reflection on that. I know we can't possibly capture every piece. They did, did do a good job. And I look forward to our future murals where we can continue the legacy of capturing all the history, rich history we have here in Paris, including one to bring up to the, the team who does, who's behind that. Your ad hoc Parks and Recs introduced to me by someone from the Paris High School, the wings, the wing murals where there's just wings and someone stands in the middle and they take a picture of them. That's a pretty cool concept, maybe we can incorporate that. And the guard, yeah, they have a picture of them hanging, yep. Okay, outside of that, I think that's all I have. So we'll move on to item number fourteen, our city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd also like to extend my condolences to Councilwoman Rogers and her family, and also congratulate Councilwoman Magaña, soon to be Nava. I'd like to update everyone on the COVID-19 testing and vaccination site. The testing site still remains open Monday through Friday from seven AM to seven PM, and walk-ins are accepted. The vaccination site remains open Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM, and it does require an appointment. The site also opened up earlier this week to, to, to allow vaccinations for all current eligible tiers. For more information or registration, you could please go on to www.cityofparis.org for testing and vaccination registration, or also for vaccination, you can go on to I'd also like to report, I'm happy to announce that the Animal Control Division now has an online portal and everyone can now obtain and renew an animal license online. And now we would like to present to you a PSA that the Animal Control Division has prepared.
Hi, I'm Senior Animal Control Officer Christina Avila, here with some fur-tastic news. Residents are now able to renew or obtain their pet license from the comfort of their own home as we have now moved to a fully digital platform. Beginning spring, the City of Paris Animal Control Division will be launching online license issuance and renewal services. Residents can visit cityofparis.org animalcontrol to apply for an animal license. New kennels have been installed and some of our furry friends are being migrated to our new facility. However, it's important to note, this facility will not be a permanent residence to the animals and we will continue to partner with our county animal services for long-term animal sheltering. As always, if you need animal services, please contact us at nine five one six five seven four one three four, or for more information, visit our website at cityofparis.org animalcontrol.
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item fifteen is our adjournment. This evening, we'll be adjourning in memory of Javen Dwayne Rogers, the grandson of Councilwoman Rita Rogers, who passed away on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Good night, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Please remember to stay safe and healthy, continue to wear your mask, and please practice social distancing. Good night.